I'll go ahead and call the City Council Special Meeting into order. It is eight oh five. We are at Granbury City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. This is Tuesday, December the 19th, 2023. And we have one agenda item, and it is consider a resolution. Nope, we're going to go to public comments first. So we have public comments. Mr. Rick Frye. Thank you, sir. If you'll let us know who you are and your address, please.
My name is Rick Frye. I live at 8106 Godley Road in Granbury, Texas, 76049. Mayor, Council, I'm also on the appraisal advisory board. And this item came up because of an action that we actually took last Thursday evening. And we're sort of unique in the fact that we operate on a budget that is approved by all the entities that we serve. We're a service organization. We appraise property, we send out bills, we collect that money, and distribute it to the entities that we service. Any time we have excess funds, we are obligated to return those, or we have to designate what we're going to do with them, and it has to be approved by the board. In this budget year, it looks like we're going to have some surplus. And our budget, we adopt our budget in June, and it doesn't take effect until January. So we have six months, really, from the time we start planning. We have about nine months in there before the budget starts. So, you know, as you know, your budget starts in March, and you adopt it in late January, first of September, and it goes in October 1st. So your lead time's not quite so long. We, our budget is set, and those revenues are furnished by the entities that we service. With the excess, what we proposed to do was put to have three different accounts established. One was a technology fund, $40,000, a building maintenance fund, $20,000, and a litigation fund of $50,000 to carry some of those funds over in the budget year. And the only way we could legally do it is adopt that, and so that's what we did. The city's contribution to our budget's about 12%. So your contribution to those funds would be about $13,200. It makes good business sense to have some money available in case you have problems. The city experienced an IT problem, and I guarantee you, any kind of reserve they had was used to take care of that problem. We need, it's good business sense to make sure that we don't have to run to you and say, oh, we need more money in our budget. We try to budget wisely, we try to do it expeditiously, we try to do it openly. And we do our best to manage that money the best we can. And we have this surplus because in some areas, we didn't spend that much money because of other different factors. But the money that we earmarked for these three funds, there's still going to be money left over that we'll refund to you. But we thought it prudent to establish these funds because we have a lot of litigation. As you know, the market value went up on a lot of properties. There's some litigation out there that we don't know what it's going to cost us to litigate those properties. Our building proposal was tabled, and so we've refunded those funds. But we have an old building, and it's subject to maintenance problems. And we just think it's expeditious that we do that. So that's all I have to say. We did it in good faith. We think we're doing the right thing, and to deny that is up to y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frye. We are running the clock, but we also do want to hear what you have to say. We have others who have signed up, if I can find that paper. I'm sure it's the people that are here. Here we go. Nope, he's not here. Mr. Mobley, Mr. Law, whichever one you choose. Mr. Mobley?
Tony Mobley, 1505 Chelsea Bay Court.
Thank you.
I'd like to say I come in peace. This does not concern hanging a plaque. There's a quote from Stephen Hawking that says, "The greatest enemy of knowledge is not ignorance, it's the illusion of knowledge." And I just want to warn this council, when you have an elected official come in here and wag his finger at you from another organization in this county, and wags your finger and forces agenda items on your agenda, please don't, you're setting a bad precedent. Please don't let that happen. We have an elected official who's not here now. He couldn't, I guess he couldn't hang around for this part. But he comes in here, and this is a continued assassination on Mr. Rodriguez from the last meeting because he didn't get his way by not getting another nominee to the CAD board. Let's don't fool ourselves. That's exactly what that is. The same elected official is the one that's costing this city another $24 million on top of the $10 million that the wastewater treatment plant is going to cost. So again, I would caution our new members, our established members, do not let this happen. Any of you can put it on the agenda item. Don't let them go through you to do it unless you truly believe it. I would finish with this, and I'm going to save you guys some time. Remember, don't let the decibel level of your opposition dictate what you do and make you do what you know is not right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mobley. Mr. Law?
Thank you. My name is Jeff Law. I'm 105 Northeast Shady Oaks Drive. Mayor, Mayor Jarrett, members of the City Council, appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. Again, my name is Jeff Law. I'm the new chief appraiser at the Hood County Appraisal District. I was appointed by the Board of Directors and started working at HCAD on September the 18th of 2023. I think yesterday was my 90th day there. My number one goal is to ensure that appraisal, the appraisal district is carrying out our required responsibilities and at all times complying with state laws, rules, and regulations. I'm here to speak on your Agenda Item 3.1, where the city will consider adopting a resolution to disapprove the action taken by the Appraisal District Board of Directors at our December 14th meeting regarding committed funds. In preparation for establishing these committed funds, and in the spirit of transparency, I sent each of you an email. I might not have sent an email to the new council member. Welcome. But I sent an email to each of you explaining the purpose of these committed funds, how the funds would be used, and how the funds would be established, and more particularly, how the funds would be governed. The email was distributed to all, actually, all taxing unit elected individuals and the officials representing those taxing units. Before the board was presented with the proposal, we sought advice from our auditors regarding their opinions about the use of committed funds and the process of obligating funds from excess proceeds. The auditors were in agreement with the process that the appraisal district was taking in order to obligate these funds, and to further state it was a common practice of appraisal districts all around that followed this same process. In fact, all of the appraisal district at this particular auditing firm, which is our auditors, all of these appraisal districts have utilized the committed fund process to deal with excess funds. Mayor, I believe the auditor has also provided you with an email response regarding this concern. I also spoke with the appraisal district's attorney regarding this matter, and they said that this was an appropriate process for utilizing excess funds and pay for future expenses. They stated the board may vote to move excess proceeds or unobligated monies into funds that will be later utilized, and they clarified that these funds are now considered obligated and to be spent and are not required to be refunded or credited back to the taxing units. They actually reference a 2014 Texas Attorney General's opinion, which was GA 10040. On December the 14th, the board established three funds, as Mr. Frye said, a building repair and maintenance fund, a technology fund, and a litigation fund. Each committed fund has a maximum dollar figure limiting the amount that can be allocated to these funds. I can assure you that none of these funds were established for the purposes of a new building or any type of new construction for the appraisal district. All of the monies that related to that issue have been refunded back to the taxing entities. Any unobligated excess proceeds, the ones that Mr. Frye just spoke about, the district currently has from its 2023 budget will either be credited or refunded to the taxing units that participated in funding the appraisal district operations. I recommend you not take any action tonight to disapprove the actions taken by our Board of Directors on December the 14th related to the establishment of committed funds. These actions were taken by the board. They were prudent, they were responsible, and they were also approved by our legal counsel and our auditing firms. My time is up, but I have an example if you would like to hear.
Please do.
The example?
Yes.
Yes, one of the examples is this. Back in November, and thank you, sir. Back in November, the board looked to hire a contractor to come in and redo some of our network cabling and to reevaluate kind of our server rack space and things of that nature. It was actually brought to the staff to go out and get bids earlier in the year, like in the July, August timeframe. We brought it in October. There were some board members that had some questions about the bids. The bids were reevaluated. We sought input from the vendors and got additional information and brought it back in November. The board then moved and selected a vendor. And when we contacted the vendor and said, we're ready to move forward, he actually couldn't, he actually couldn't start the project until mid-January. Well, this was a budgeted item in 2023. We had the funds, the funds are available, but now the work won't be accomplished until January. This committed fund process is the exact and ideal way in which we can take monies that were budgeted in 2023, commit them to a fund, technology fund, and then we can use that money actually in 2024. We sought advice from our auditors on this, and they said this is exactly the purpose for the committed funds. Now, I recommended to the board to use committed funds from the standpoint that, one, a committed fund cannot be created by anybody other than the Board of Directors. The funds cannot be put into this committed fund without action from the Board of Directors, and money cannot be taken out of these funds without action by the Board of Directors. And as I said, the board can actually establish maximums, maximum amounts that can be put in there. So we have a current situation that we're dealing with right now that these committed funds would benefit the appraisal district to utilize monies that we had in 2023 that you all contributed. But because of either vendor questions or slow responses from vendors or trying to determine what we actually needed, it delayed the process to where it's going to have to take place next year in 2024 rather than 2023. With regards to litigation, as Mr. Frye says, we do get a lot of litigation. These are not lawsuits against the appraisal district for some kind of dire problems or contentiousness. It's value-related litigation. It's the process that property owners get to go through if they disagree with the value that was set by the appraisal district and subsequently set by the appraisal review board. A lot of commercial properties, hotels, motels, apartment complexes, and larger tracts of land. We get sued annually by these. Having a litigation fund will allow us to go out and hire expert witnesses to help us defend some of these values. We got two bids just the other day for two motels in town, $7,500 apiece just for the appraisal work on the two motels. That doesn't include the apartment complexes. They can be in the $10,000 to $15,000 to $20,000 range when you get an expert opinion on one of those. But having some money set aside for litigation gives us a little bit of an ability to not be forced into negotiations, but to have some money set aside that if we feel like we need to go to the next level, we can. Thank you so much for the time. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Let me finish out our list of people to talk. But if you don't mind, probably just stay right there if there are some questions.
Certainly, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Dave Eagle. Mr. Eagle. I think you asked three times, and I don't believe Mr. Eagle's here. So that finishes up the people that we have to talk here. Since I put the agenda item on the agenda, let me go ahead and say a few things. And Mr. Law, we certainly will give you an opportunity to answer questions, ask questions for that matter. The meeting that I attended December the 12th or 14th, I believe, December the 14th, was at the request of one of our taxpaying citizens because they had come across an item in prior meetings, and they're asking, really, is this going to happen? Are we going to continue to pay people money to build a building? Well, going to the building, going to the meeting, that's why I went to the meeting at the request. And while at the meeting, I heard, saw the agenda items. The agenda items look reasonable here until we get down to number four, discuss taking action to establish the following funds. And the objection, not, I say objection, I don't have an objection on committed funds for the purpose of committing current funds for future expenditures. That's an accrual process. And if you have that, you can see that. And you can set up your accounting, you know, any way that works with the Texas law. But when the discussion took place, there was discussion about where the money would come from. And some of this is just language, I'm sure, and maybe I'm using the wrong language. But even tonight, you use the words excess proceeds. Well, proceeds come from the taxing, the taxes, is my understanding. Expenses, you know, less expenses than you had in, that you had budgeted. If you budgeted $1,000, you spent $800, then you have $200 better than budget. But those are not excess proceeds. But those languages kept coming up that you would use the excess funds proceeds. So that's the question that I have. Now, I lead into that because, just because of our experience with the HCAD. I don't know if you know, and maybe we should have a conversation about, you know, I want to make sure that we're all talking about the same, on the same page. But in 21, 2021, the board 2021 actually set up what is called a home office corporation. And that home office corporation could grant, they had the power to maintain funds, funds of real property. They had reasonable compensation that would be paid. They could, their treasurer could give and give receipts of monies due and payable to the corporation for any source whatsoever. The officer, principal officer could sign deeds, mortgages, bonds, contracts, or other instruments. The directors could meet at any such place or places in or outside the state of Texas or as the Board of Directors may from time to time determine. What I was hearing the board discuss in the last meeting was these types of rules versus Texas Tax Code 6.0 as it relates to appraisal districts. So I'm asking, this, we don't have a, the HCAD no longer has this home office corporation, correct?
Actually, sir, the home office corporation was never officially set up. From my conversations with the attorney that helped them, they attempted to set it up. They took action at a board meeting to set it up. But unfortunately, the chief appraiser then never sent any of the documentation back to the attorney for it to be filed with the Secretary of State. So it officially was never, it was never enacted. Now, after I came in my first board meeting in September, one of the first things that we put on the agenda was to rescind the previous decisions that the board had taken to try to establish this corporation. But according to the attorney that did the paperwork, because it had never been filed with the Secretary of State, it had never actually been officially set up.
And I believe that that's correct. It was filed with the Hood County clerks.
That I'm not certain of, but.
I can make you certain of that.
Okay, I wouldn't argue with you on that.
But it has been rescinded. These types of allowing, I mean, this is, I guess the other thing is that the home office corporation was not.
Point of order.
What is your point, Mr. Rodriguez?
My point is that it's not related to the agenda item, Mayor. Home office corporation is not related to the agenda item.
And I heard you, and I'm making the point that the utilization of funds is, and the methodology of which is described in the last meeting of the utilization of funds ties closely to the corporate purpose and the power to maintain it, funds or funds of real property for corporate purposes, which was the home office corporation. And I'm just wanting to make sure that we are not operating the HCAD under the bylaws of the rescinded home office corporation.
We are not operating the Hood Central Appraisal District under any home office corporation.
I think you can understand my trepidation here on hearing that based upon what happened in '21 and then the $1.9 million that got turned back to the entities in '22 that had been held erroneously for three years. So my antenna's up when I'm listening at the public meeting here. And yes, the auditor has been very, very good at providing information or answering questions in a very timely and concise manner. And the last question that I asked her, and you've been copied on all of these, was, am I understanding that you're saying that non-budgeted dollars can be added to the committed funds from the excess tax revenues, and the budget is therefore increased without approval of the entities? And her response is, no. I'm saying that if expenditures do not meet budgeted amounts, they can be committed, and any amounts that are in excess of that committed should be refunded to the taxing units. In this scenario, there is no increase in the budget. And then she goes further and says, and no amendment, which is, you know, one of the questions that we have here. But I would like, you know, to hear that commitment that there is no increase to the budget.
No, there has not been any increase whatsoever in the 2023 budget. The term "non-budgeted revenue" was confusing to both she and I, not really understanding what your point was with regards to a non-budgeted revenue. The appraisal district established a 2023 budget. It was submitted, it was approved, the Board of Directors approved it, and the taxing units began sending to us, and there are normal quarterly payments, the revenues associated with that. Throughout the year, different things happened which caused us to not need as much of that budget, or we didn't have as many expenses as what we brought in revenue. For example, we had employees that left. We didn't have to pay their salary for a period of time. The chief appraiser left. We didn't pay his salary for a period of time along with the benefits, retirement, insurance, and those other ancillary things that go along with payroll. So there was funds that were left over, excess proceeds. We would refer to the monies that we would receive from the taxing entity as proceeds, and then we would have expenses. So the proceeds outweighed the expenses, so that we have excess proceeds. And it was from those excess proceeds that we are committing a portion of them. There will be additional excess proceeds that will be refunded back to the taxing entities. I can't give you an exact number because the auditor needs to come in and do their work, make their year-end adjustments, journal entries, and things of that nature. And then we'll know what the total amount will be. Those will be refunded. I will recommend to the Board of Directors to either credit them, as the tax code says, or refund them to the taxing entities. But the 2023 budget was not amended in any way other than to shift. At that same meeting, we did have some budget line item amendments where we might have shifted some money from one line item in the budget to another line item in the budget. But we did not increase the total 2023 budget by one penny.
Okay, and that's how you will fund these accounts? You will shift from, like you said, compensation?
Yes.
Callouts, whatever. It's in the existing budget.
That's correct.
So it is not any of the.
We're not asking for any additional monies from any additional, any taxing units whatsoever. It's shifting money from different departments or different line items that we did not spend all the money in over to these committed funds. And these committed funds will be reported in our annual audit when they finish doing that, and I'm not sure, maybe April, March, April, somewhere in that timeframe.
Okay.
They will be reported.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that.
My pleasure.
Other questions, comments?
I have one, just to clarify things.
Yes, sir.
The summary of this AG opinion is very clear. An expenditure of an appraisal district has committed during the fiscal year to meet or secure an obligation is an expenditure that is obligated to be spent under subsection 6.06J of the Tax Code. Only payments made or due to be made by the taxing unit should be included in the excess funds calculation and returned or credited back to the taxing units as required by subsection 606J. Excess funds must be returned or credited to the participating taxing units as required by the subsection. The fact that the particular line item is not prepared in the proposed budget by the June 15th deadline is not by itself fatal to the expenditure. The budget process in section 6.06 does not prevent amendments to the proposed budget after the public hearing process and before the budget is finally approved. A proposed salary increase is likely not constitutional. That was their issue, trying to give raises to some employees with unspent funds. And then the second question that was answered was, an appraisal district, participating taxing units may utilize section 6.10 of the Tax Code to disapprove the amendment of a budget by an appraisal district board. So really, what I'm reading here doesn't apply to what we're talking about unless we're looking at that first paragraph where it says it needs to be obligated, like a purchase order issued during this fiscal year can be encumbered and carried forward. That's the way I read this. So I don't know if this is on point with what you're dealing with and what the mayor's perception of what we're dealing with. But from, in my simple terms, as the city manager of this organization, if I'm creating a fund and asking the council to take unspent funds and put it in there, by definition, that is a budget amendment, and that's his perspective. And what you're having from your attorney, I'm just clarifying, framing what we've heard tonight, is that your attorney says if we're not increasing the total amount of revenue that you're budgeted to receive, and you're not spending more than the total amount of expenditures, you can move that money internally without being challenged unless it's just the 6.06 over just the board action that's 15 days instead of 30-day notice. Is that kind of where we're at? Do we all understand that?
That's kind of where we're at, yes. And by the action that the board took on Thursday, it was to take some of those excess proceeds and to obligate them for a future expenditure. And I'm a big believer that you should not put reoccurring charges like salaries and insurance and things like that. You should not fund those type of expenditures out of committed funds or any type of fund balance because those need to go in as line items within your budget. The type of committed funds that we're looking to do here would be in the event that our air conditioners go out, and all of a sudden, we've got to replace air conditioners or something to that effect from the building repair, or a repair needs to be made to the building that wouldn't be covered by insurance and things like that. This network cabling issue is going to be something that we will, we need to undergo. We currently have a telephone system that is at end of life, and the contract on it will end in April. And that's another item that would be, it would be a one-time purchase type thing. The ongoing payments of maintenance and support and things of that nature would be in the budget, be in the line items of the budget. Now, what we would do in this particular case is, once we make the adjustments to the networking system and we pay for that, we may have to come back and make a line item adjustment in our budget to make sure there's enough money in the technology line item. But we would maybe fund that rather than coming back to the taxing entities and say, we need an additional amount of money. We would fund that out of this committed fund.
So you're basically creating a contingency fund for those three funds. That's basically what I'm hearing.
Essentially, yeah, without really calling, and auditors prefer us to use this term committed fund rather than contingency fund.
Well, committed means it's, can't be spent on anything else.
Exactly.
So starting dense, where are the excess proceeds coming from?
Just as I said before, in places where we didn't spend all of our proceeds.
So expense lines that are, that were budgeted at $1,000 and you paid, and you spent $500. So there's an extra $500 that you can move to these contingent funds.
We had things such as ARB expenditures that we didn't, that we didn't spend all the monies out of ARB. We have some funds left over from litigation that we haven't spent that I want to hold on to for. See, the funny thing about litigation is, is that when we go through the ARB process in May, June, and July, the lawsuits don't come in. the lawsuits don't come in until 60 days later. So you wind up getting a lawsuit, say in August or September, about an issue that, that occurred back in May. Well, through the court system, it's not going to be until next year that we actually deal with that lawsuit if we wind up going to court, if we wind up going through discovery and interrogatories and that thing. So it's, it's something that's pushed down the road. So part of that, part of that litigation fund will be funded by the monies that we didn't spend out of this 2023 budget for litigation. And then the same thing, as you said, there's, there's some funds left over with auto allowances. There's some funds left over from salaries. There's some funds left over from insurance that were not spent because we didn't either have the people there and didn't need it. So we'll fund these, we'll fund these committed funds with those proceeds.
Right, you make a journal entry and move from X to Y.
Yes, and the auditors will ensure that we do that properly.
Okay.
I'm a big believer in not guessing. I'd much rather prefer to call the auditors or call the attorneys and say, "Tell me how I'm supposed to make this entry" before we make it.
Okay.
So we do it correctly.
Good. Comments, questions?
Just one clarification for everybody's identification. You're not increasing your revenue by planning to do the, I know the answer to this, but I'm putting it on record.
Yes.
For somebody that's home watching or wants to look at later. You're not increasing your budget. You're not going to send us a bill for the additional percentage of whatever you put in those committed funds. You're simply moving unspent money that was budgeted for different line items into those funds. Did I say that right?
You said that correct and that's absolutely correct. We're not asking for more money.
I just want to make sure that everything's documented on this recording.
I've, I've been a chief appraiser for 25 years and to this date, I've never come back to a taxing unit and said, "I need more money." Now, that's not to say that sometime in the future, I don't come back and do that, but I will assure you that when we come back and we want to do a budget amendment, it will be something that we'll most likely have to have a budget hearing on down at the appraisal district. We will have to get approval from all the taxing entities before that happens. And that will be a completely different conversation than, than the one we're having now.
Okay. Other questions? No? Well, as Mr. Rodriguez, as you mentioned, we could take no action. We could withdraw the, the item at all? If you want to make a motion?
Mayor, this is, this is your item. If you want to make the motion to withdraw your own item, I will second that.
I will make the motion that I withdraw the item. What do we have here, 20? Yeah, the resolution number 23-30.
I second.
Mr. Rodriguez, second? Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. There are no nays. It is approved 6-0. Mr. Law, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Appreciate the explanation and the education. Thank you.
Anytime.
Well, I'd like to do it earlier.